This conference will now be recorded.
All right, this is Mark McKeever. I am calling the Bucyrus City Council Committee, Special Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:30. Members present are Kevin Myers, Bruce Truka, James, me and myself as Chair. Okay, the Special Finance Committee meeting was called by committee members to discuss repeal and replacement of the existing billet, employee manpower and supervisor manpower ordinances. It was called to order by itself at 6:30. In lieu of public participation, I'd like, uh, the public will be able to speak, but I'd like for the, um, committee to start. And when we, um, are done with discussion, then we will let the public have any input. As of right now-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a statement that might, you know, might help here if I can make it. Do you, if I could interrupt you?
Okay. Go ahead.
We just want to say last week, uh, our administration requested legislation to allow the city of Bucyrus to supplement our safety forces by hiring additional employees on a part-time basis in response to the rapidly changing threat of the COVID-19 virus on our workforce. Our intention was to maintain our services to the community in case any of our departments, as well as Portsmouth EMS, in the case that any of these departments became incapacitated through quarantine. Local COVID-19 news has been better this week, um, in regards to the amount of cases and, uh, also in hospitalizations that we have in our area. And we have a sense that the work that is being done and has been done to slow the spread is working. Uh, in addition, we had a conference call with representatives from Portsmouth Ambulance, and we were assured that they were adjusting well to the situation and that an interruption in service is not anticipated at this time. The situation may change in the future, and I would expect it to change. No one knows how we will be required to act to ensure the safe continuation of our safety forces and EMS, but for now, we are withdrawing our request to allow the city to hire part-time workers. Thank you.
Okay. That answers a lot of the questions. Um, has anybody else have any questions for the mayor?
Are you gonna ask for public participation or?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say. With that, uh, I am now allowing any public participation, and please limit it to, your comments to the subject that matter.
Vicki DeShawn, 11:08.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me? Vicki DeShawn.
Yes, go ahead.
11:08, Hillcrest Drive, Bucyrus, Ohio. I only have one question, and that has to do with the employee manpower. On page three of 14, under the access 19, telecommunications coordinator. There is a reference to signing bonus, $180. And I just wonder if somebody could explain that to me?
That, that's to be deleted. That's, that's a, a carryover from a cut and paste error. I thought we got them all out, but apparently we missed one.
Could you hear that? That's from Mr. Radliff.
Yes, thank you.
Well, we're on manpower. What is a casual secretary, part-time?
What section are you looking at?
It, it's on page, uh, two at the top. 14, section 14. It's under the law director.
Law director.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a job category that's, that's in the billet, but is not filled.
So, we're gonna have that taken out of there?
You, you can take it out if you want. It's been there for a while. We don't, we don't have employee in that position. There's a number of positions that there are no employees in.
I would like to request that if there are vacant, um, positions, that they actually be removed from the billet so that we're not just knowingly hiring people at this point in time?
Well, we have a hiring freeze right now, and, uh, if there was anything that our administration has done, we've cut employment. We're not, you know, maybe a future administration may need that, I don't know, but, you know, there, there, we have a hiring freeze. We're not gonna hire anybody.
The only answer to that question would be, is that, you know, the next administration, if they wanted the position, they could come back to city council and request it. I mean, that is, that's the other half of it.
Yeah, we don't need it, so why is it in there? I mean, let's clean it up if we're going to get this passed.
So, do we have a casual pool secretary?
No.
Um, I actually have another question. We have a couple different sections under like the park area where there are seasonal caretakers, and then we have lawn maintenance, but we already added two positions to the billet for extra lawn people. So, is that kind of a double? Is it a hit and miss?
Well, we still need one part-time seasonal probably till seven o'clock at night, whenever we get the park back open, but the lawn, uh, personnel we have in there, that could be removed.
I just didn't know if it was being mentioned on both, like, an oversight that because we were adding these two positions, these were gonna be eliminated. I didn't understand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Could I just mention with the lawn maintenance, um, that's a separate person from the parks. This is the person that mows the ditches, mows the, uh, area around the overpasses on East Mansfield Street, uh, operates the boom mower, which requires a little more skill than just the riding lawn mower around, around the park.
Isn't that the same job, though, that we added to the other one? Because I remember Jeff saying that piece of equipment's very expensive, and we didn't want just any, um, Tom, Dick and Harry guy using it, that it was a more skilled position?
Yeah, that's true. That, that's, I, I forgot, I did, but yes, that, that is our guy, we hire for six months from like May to October, June to October, to run the boom mower, and he takes care of all the maintenance on it too. So, it is a little more specialty than the two people we're gonna put in the parks to help mow and cover the park over the summer. Joyce is correct, we need to leave that in there.
So, those aren't the two skilled laborers that we added under the street department, which is 50 streets, 50 parks?
No, that's just to help cover all the mowing that we do at the park and throughout the city, and that we have coverage in the park every day.
Is there any other question?
I got a question. Those, those two combined positions we were looking at, which, uh, was like a parks or a parks person shared with streets department, did we, did we end up hiring somebody in that, or did that not happen?
Well, we put it out to bid, and we got two people that bid out of the service garage to work, one of them to work Sunday through Thursday, and one to work Tuesday through Saturday. That was supposed to start in May, but right now, we put our civil service test on hold to hire two people to replace that with the situation we're in right now.
So, if everything's on hold right now, um, and that was the, the whole reason why this whole billet was brought up in the first place was because of the word skilled not being on there, which I think is why we're all here today. Anyway, maybe we should just kinda hold off on doing anything then.
We had two people bid on that job as a skilled labor. I didn't want a regular labor. There's nothing in the ask-me contract for a laborer in the parks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This particular change in the billet was just to correct that laborer to skilled laborer. If those people in the street department that bid on this actually go and work in the parks part of the time, uh, we need to, we just need to have it clarified. It's not getting more people at this point, it is just clarifying the error.
That's correct.
Okay, that, that's, that's, that's a good explanation then.
Thank you.
I'm fine with the billet here as it is. I, I did have some questions on the ordinance 13-2020, which was the, uh, looks like the pay stuff. One of them was, I see on page four of 14, there's some bold print indicating some changes to the wording on the legal assistant and victim's advocate. And also, I seen on page, uh, 12 of 14, under the minutemen, it, there's, there's some changes being proposed there, and, um, I just, I, I, we hadn't discussed any of that. I'm, I'm wondering if there's any explanations on that.
Yeah, uh, with respect to the victim advocate and the, uh, legal assistant position, the wording there was shall, uh, be 40 hours per week for both of those positions. We are asking you to consider changing it to shall be up to 40 hours per week. Two reasons, one, the victim's advocate, uh, grant funding is likely being reduced, and the number of hours the victim's advocate is going to be working is going to be reduced. And currently, um, despite the ordinance that says shall, currently the legal assistant working reduced hours, and we want the flexibility to not have to work full 40 hours a week, depending on budget.
What all departments, what all departments are working reduced hours currently? Do we have any idea on that?
I, I don't know. Uh, with respect to, with respect to section 15, again, there, there was a shall, uh, that the city shall have a minimum of 15 minutemen. I don't know that we actually have, shall have 15, but by changing May, that gives us the opportunity to, to have them, uh, or a lesser number, or no number, I don't know how many we have.
Did, did, were the unions asked about that change? I mean, that seems to be something they could be affected by.
Well, currently, we don't have any that, that I'm aware of, so we're in violation of an ordinance that tells us that we shall have 15. So, uh, and likewise with the mandatory 40 hours a week in the other two positions, I'm suggesting that you change your shall to a may so that there's some flexibility to go downward, because right now, you don't have 15.
How, how many years have we been in violation of this ordinance?
I, I couldn't tell you that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The minutemen in the fire department, those positions have been there for as long as I can remember. I think the last year that we actually had any minutemen was probably around 2005, 2006. And these gentlemen were called in as backup if needed on a major fire. They were only paid for the hours that they actually came in and worked. Actually, the reason we don't have any right now is because they had aged out. I don't know if there's anybody out there that would be interested in those positions or not, but, you know, it's not hurting anything, let's put it that way.
Well, Joyce, weren't those called paid on call?
Pretty much, yeah. In the billet, they were minutemen, but they were, you know, paid on call, yeah.
Okay, does anybody else in, uh, finance have a question on the billet, or?
I'm not sure if it's been that way for 20-odd years. I mean, we haven't been sued yet. Is there some action that you think that we are going to be?
Well, the, no, the conversation on the preview, on the billet was about cleaning it up and making the language, uh, cleaned up. I think that's just a continuation of that same conversation, which we started this, cleaning it up.
Okay, okay. Well, that, that's, that's fine.
Does anybody else have any comments on the work, changing of the wording, uh, for the, uh, may up to, uh, 40, up to 40 hours and the manpower for the minutemen?
So, what, what sections are we in?
Okay. This is on, this is on the, uh, 13-2020.
Okay.
And it's on page, uh, four of 14. Bottom paragraphs showing for the victim's advocate and for the legal assistant, the wording was added as in up to 40.
Okay.
The words up to were added so that they aren't committed that they have to have 40.
Okay.
And the other is on, I'm getting to that page 12. On page 12 of 14, section 15, it says there, and they crossed out shall and changed the word to may, and that's what was meant to be changed, may, the minimum.
Okay.
Doesn't mean you have to, but it, you know, it allows us to, but we don't have to.
All right. So, go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, so you're on four of 14, it says, basic work period of a legal assistance herein shall be up to 40 hours per week, the basic work period of a casual secretary. I mean, if you're putting it in there now, you must have plans, right?
No, it was, it was always in there, and, and I, that shall, uh, I think, um, should be changed to, to may, maybe up to, because there is no casual secretary, there hasn't been one for a couple of years.
With no plans to hire one?
No.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
On, under the parks and playgrounds and the caretakers and the lawn maintenance, those are, um, seasonal, and it states that we have to rehire them. Are we going to rehire seasonal, or can we maybe give the option of the people that are down to four days a week to go out and help do this kind of work to maybe make up to their 40 hours?
Right now, everybody's working 40 hours right now.
The people, the people at city hall aren't on reduced hours?
No.
Okay.
Was the mayor just saying, Mark, I didn't hear him?
Okay, everybody, hold on. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, what, what did you, we, you got broke up because somebody interrupted as you were talking. What are the hours? And they were asking if the, uh, um, street department for the trash removal, if they're working full 40 hours, or is, everybody is working full 40 hours, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I would like to add, excuse me, I would like to add, Mr. Chairman, that we are having a meeting with department heads individually next week about, uh, you know, plans for, for reductions in staff. Of course, it's gonna, you know, depend on, uh, you know, and other expenses in each budget line. And, uh, we asked for their input because, uh, you know, like I mentioned earlier, that we do expect significant revenue reductions, so we want to be prepared for it. We have been working on it for about two or three weeks, and, you know, so we'll get back with you.
Mark?
Comes a little bit more clear.
Question for the mayor?
Go ahead.
When do you have that, when will you have those numbers in?
What numbers?
He said we're gonna be reduced.
Which one are you looking at?
How many people's on unemployment? How many people's lost their jobs? Factories are shut down.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was talking, you were talking, so I'll let you talk now. Go ahead and ask the question again, Jim.
So, we're gonna have, we have people that's laid off, we have income reductions in the city. When will we have those numbers in to find out whether we have enough money to operate for the next month?
Well, it's, uh, and, and Joyce can chime in there. So far, uh, revenue's holding pretty strong, but, um, we anticipate, um, through, uh, end of April and into May, we're gonna start to see decline in our withholding, uh, and then it'll just be a matter of how soon the governor will let us get back open and the economy rebound. So, um, the governor, uh, a couple of weeks ago, got our attention pretty quickly when he said, uh, they expect a 20% revenue reduction in the state, um, and so that's a figure that we're using, and, you know, whether we get a 5% reduction or a 30% reduction, we don't know. But we will, you know, have to be good stewards of our tax dollars as best as we can. And, uh, you know, if you catch up on the news, I see the city of Palma laid off 40 workers today in anticipation of, uh, revenue reduction. We're not being that aggressive. Uh, we feel we don't have to be right now, but, uh, um, you know, we're gonna have a plan just in case that we do.
I got a question.
Go ahead, Bruce. Oh.
Yes, Kurt here. Um, how soon, Joyce, at the end of April, would we know what the April income tax revenues are gonna look like?
Well, I'll know when I do, uh, month ends on May 1st. Um, right now, like the mayor said, things are holding fairly steady, but if you compare it to where we were at last year, in April, we, we brought in a million dollars in tax revenue, and that was record. I don't see that happening this year, partially because of the delay in, uh, the filing deadline. A lot of people are still filing. By the 15th, I'm expecting a lot of mail tomorrow and probably the rest of the week. But, um, that income, people had good years last year, so there's probably gonna be revenue coming in, but it may be stretched out till July. Maybe even if they file for a federal extension, which they already have three months, but it could go even longer. But I would hope that we would bring in at least 750,000 this month, but I just, I don't know. We just don't have any idea who's gonna file and who isn't gonna file. But I will, I will have the numbers on May 1st.
Okay, well.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, hold on a sec. Go ahead, Kurt, finish what you were saying.
Oh, I was just, I was just gonna say, my, my, my biggest concern would be a drop in revenues that would potentially lead to safety force layoffs, and as I'm looking at this ordinance 13-2020 here, I see a lot of, uh, pay increases for non-union employees, and if we're in a situation here in the next couple of weeks where we may have to approach the unions and ask them if they might be willing to agree to a pay freeze to prevent layoffs, how would we be able to ask them that if they can turn around and say, well, two weeks earlier, you gave pay raises to everybody? So.
Well, they already have their pay raise.
Well, I, I know it's in the ask-me contracts and stuff, but what I'm saying is, we may have to go to them and say, hey, this is a bad situation, would you guys be willing to voluntarily take a pay raise in order to not have any police and fire layoffs? And if we do these pay raises on the non-union positions right now, they're never gonna agree to that. They're never gonna agree to the voluntary if we're giving pay raises in other places in the city. So, I was kinda thinking, maybe we oughta just lay this thing on the table for two weeks until we know where we are here in the end of April.
And how fair is that to the non-union employees when the union employees all have their raises?
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, you, you passed, uh, the contract last month, and now you're gonna say, well, the non-union people don't deserve it? I, I just agree.
I'm not saying they don't deserve it, I'm saying in two weeks, we may have to go to the unions and say, hey, we might, we may be faced with a citywide pay freeze here.
Okay, but if that happens, then we'll go to the non-union people too. It'll be everything across the board, but right now, you've got a discrepancy between the two groups.
Mr. Chairman? When you, when I get them-
Yes, just a minute. Yeah, uh, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's put this in perspective here. Uh, and Joyce, correct me if my numbers are wrong. The payroll for the city of Bucyrus, including all departments, all workers, runs about five and a half million dollars a year.
Yes.
Now, if you're asking for a pay freeze of 2%, you're saving $100,000. That's what you're saving there now. Now, if you, a police officer, firefighter, it costs the city about $100,000, including benefits per year. Let me go one step further. In the Great Recession, so-called Great Recession, income tax revenue dropped, um, and I did the numbers yesterday, I think between 10 and 15%, right? If we're expecting a 20% general fund decrease in revenue, that will be 1.2 million dollars, 1.2 million dollars. A pay freeze isn't gonna, isn't gonna touch this. If that happens, it's gonna be, it's gonna be cuts, just like it was back in 2008. Only, it might be worse, who knows, or it might be better, we just don't know. We pray that it isn't. We pray, we haven't had to lay anybody off since I've been in office, and I know Joyce was here the last time, I don't, and she, I'm sure she hated doing it, but we do have to work within our budgets, we are required by law to do that. So, just to pitch in perspective, how much money, the difference between the two, and what a pay freeze that you're requesting there would, you know, would be nothing, basically.
Suspended.
Now, and then the other thing too, you know, we, we approached the union right, ask-me union, excuse me, ask-me union about, roughly a month ago, when this was all coming out, and about going to a 30-hour work week, excuse me, 32-hour work week, and they preferred to be laid off. They didn't wanna go to a 32-hour work week, so, you know. Yeah, and that'll be part of the discussion with, with the police union, the fire union, and ask-me next week, that, next week, as we talk to them and try to figure out a plan. So, it's a complicated, uh, issue that's unfolding, uh, and, then we hope that it's, you know, we just hope that it's not like, uh, the governor predicts, but we need to be prepared for it.
Okay. Every time you give a pay raise to a non-union, the unions can come back and say, there's a reason why we should get a pay raise. You, you gotta stop giving pay raises at some point here, or you're, you're never gonna have any negotiation tactics. Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Yes, go ahead. Just to clarify, the non-union, though, follows the same contract as ask-me. They're, they're on two different, they're on two different, um, fronts. I mean, what I'm saying is, is the police and fire are now just coming into their, into their negotiations, and, and, uh, just happens to be as kind of-
and, and just happens to be, it's kind of a shame in a way that there's been such a lag time behind, but really the, the non-union and Ask Me are basically, could almost be said to be one and the same in a way. I mean, the, the, the non-union people follow the Ask Me contract, even though the Ask Me has already been approved. The non-union probably should be approved right along with them.
I agree.
Right?
Thank you, Bruce. That's been a tradition of the city long before we got here, you know.
Mr. Mayor, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I do have one question. So you're planning on meeting with the unions next week. Is there any?
We're planning to meet with department heads.
Department heads, okay. I was just wondering when the next Labor Management Committee meeting would be, like with firefighters or with the police to get their input on the situation.
Uh, we, we've suspended all meetings. Obviously, right now, everything's just.
Also, you know.
Yeah.
It's urgent. I would think that their input would be vital, being their job to do.
Okay, sorry, sorry to interrupt you. Uh, the police chief and fire chief will be meeting with them, and then they'll have their views at their, at our meetings, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions about?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead, Bruce.
Um, since we, I thought we were just gonna stay on the billlet, but I, I listened and we, we jumped to employee manpower right away. And so apparently we're not following the itinerary very well. So I'm gonna hop to, uh, 14-2020 and speak to the supervisor manpower. And I just got some questions there. I mean, okay, um, we, we had spoken to, uh, you know, those casual secretaries and, and Mr. Ratliff agreed that those positions really didn't need to be in there. And there was other positions that didn't need to be there. And so I got a question. Why do we have something called a utility service superintendent on page one of 10 on ordinance 14-2020? That's the first one. Uh, the second one is page two of 10 on 14 2020. And that one's called the utility superintendent. I know, I know, see, we, we did away with all those positions and we saved money. And we gave that, all that responsibility to Mr. Wagner. And then, but in those first two positions, we, we give no updated pay raises. But then when we get down to filtration, we don't have a, we don't have anybody in that spot neither. And we don't have anybody in wastewater, but we're giving, at least in the black, it says that it apparently we're doing something there maybe?
No, no. Mayor, ask a question.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff's gonna respond.
That'd be fine, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Those have been in there way before I came here. And as we eliminated those positions, we, we've just never taken them out. And whenever there was, uh, a change in, uh, the pay on, uh, in the manpower or in this section, they just went ahead and updated those. You know, maybe someday somebody will want to put them back, somebody into those positions. If they don't, and you want to remove, we can take them all out.
Well, then I, I, I would say let's just take them all out and be done with it. I mean, I, I mean, we're streamlining stuff. Let's streamline everything then.
That's still you guys. You want them out? Rob will take them out.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I want it streamlined. I don't want to be voting on something that's, you say we never use them, we never there, so let's get rid of them.
Okay, so, all right. Um, if there's no other discussions on the billlet, let's get that one taken care of first. Um, if there's no other discussion, do I have a motion to accept the changes under section I for streets for the two laborers? And wording with change to skilled? That's the only change I see in the billlet. So do I have a motion for that?
Sean here?
Yes.
I thought we were removing the casual secretary out of the law director's office. The part-time casual secretary.
Yes.
Okay.
I thought that was a discussion that was the stream. That's on page 1 of 5, under B. I mean, I'm just asking because you discussed that.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
So Mark, is this, is this under 122020?
Yes.
Casual secretary under 122020?
Yes.
I don't see casual secretary. Oh, I see it.
Casual secretary on page 1 of 5.
Got it.
So if there's no, if there's no questions, we're gonna remove casual secretary, part-time, under section B, law director's office, number one, one position, we remove that. And then change the wording under I for streets, under group leader, down to the laborers, and adding the word skilled. 50% streets, 50% parks.
One more question. Do we have a code enforcement officer?
Yes, we do.
Gordon Grove. He's laid off? Right here that?
Right now, yes. Rob, Rob told him not to come back till May 1st.
Since we're not allowed to enter homes right now, um, you know, we thought this saved the budget. We'd wait till that restriction was lifted by the governor. And so we'd make better use of that, that position, so.
So we can make better use of that position there? Is that what you said?
Yeah, because he can go out, but he can't, you know, do the inspections and we have to maintain our distance from people. And so we thought let's hold off until the governor lifts the, the order restrictions and, and then hopefully early part of May, he'll be back to work. Well, we hope so.
As you see, Jim, he's only, he's only part-time, Jim. He only, I, uh, correct me, how many hours does he have, Mr. Ratliff?
Uh, well, it depends on the. Well, we try, we try to go, uh, early spring till late fall, 20 hours a week, 20 to 25 hours a week, as needed.
When was he laid off, Mr. Ratliff?
He only, he's only been back to work, uh, maybe 20 hours the entire year so far. Yeah, we had a few things to catch up on in March and, uh, and then he's been off the entire month of April.
Bear, bear in mind, Gordon is a retired firefighter. And he's just kind of nice enough to do this job for the city. He's not dependent, you know, on, on this income, I guess you could say. Uh, he does a great job because he's got the experience for the inspections and, and all that kind of thing. And so I'm sure he doesn't mind being off right now and coming back later.
Joyce? His qualifications are just a firefighter? Electrician or HVAC or plumber or?
Well, he's basically for enforcing our codes, uh, with the property maintenance. He, he doesn't go in, I mean, and he can check, you know, electrical and that kind of thing. Rob, you can probably explain better what he does than I can.
As a part of his, he was a fire department, he was the captain in the fire department for a very long period of time. He was a certified building inspector through the fire department and has those credentials now. When we have additional things, uh, electric or anything like that, that we need a specialist, we, we bring somebody in.
Okay, if there's no other questions?
I was gonna say he's busy and he's worth his weight in gold.
Okay, if there are no other questions about the billlet with the modifications made to section B and section I, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, can I, can I ask a question? Are you also modifying or taking out the utility service superintendent and the utility superintendent? As Mr. B suggested.
In the billlet also?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, yes.
Five.
Okay. All right, it's taken out both utility superintendents. All right. With those four modifications, uh, yeah, do I have a motion from finance committee members?
Yeah, I, I move. Truka.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Bruce, do I have a second?
Hey, Kevin's trying to second it, but his audio ain't working for some reason there.
Okay, so if there's no objection, I have a first by Bruce and a second by Kevin Myers. Okay, all those in favor? Um, say aye, Bruce.
Or thumbs up.
I'll say aye, Bruce.
Okay, Jimmy.
Yes.
And Kevin with a thumbs up or down?
Two thumbs up.
Two thumbs up. Okay, motion passed on the billlet with the modifications. All right, on the ordinance 132020 for the, uh, non-union, uh, employees, the pay raises of the two and a quarter percent across the board. And with the modifications of the wording on page four to change it for the legal assistant may be up to, and victim's advocate will be up to 40 hours. And removing, uh, changing the wording on page 12, section 15 to, from SOW to MAY for the minute, then do I have a motion for this?
Mr. Chair.
You have one other?
On page four, we'll also remove the line about the casual secretary.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying that. Yes, and removing that line there. Removal of the casual secretary. So with those modifications, do I have a motion?
I actually have a question real quick. Do we have a tennis program supervisor?
No.
Is that something we can have removed?
No reason not to.
I don't see us ever having one in the future. So if you want to remove it, we can.
Okay. And with that removal also, on page three, for one tennis program supervisor, which is seasonal, removing that. Do I have a motion to accept this ordinance number 13?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And, and so we're amending, we're amending the signing bonus on access communication?
Yeah, that was, that's a, that's a cut and paste here.
But I mean, it's, it's written down, so do we have to say it as an amendment?
Yeah, well, your, your, your motion would be to, to, to have this prepared without that, the corrections, the other corrections and that correction as well.
Okay, okay.
I have another question. Do we have a casual pool secretary?
Not at this time.
Is that something we can have removed?
I don't see why not. We don't have it. We're saving money.
Mr. Wagner, can you explain that one? Because it says it's a part-time clerk.
Well, I think, uh, yeah, I guess you might have to ask Joyce because Wagner haven't had one since. I, I don't, um, I don't know, Joyce, is that something that we can remove?
That was considered like a pool secretary to be used wherever they were needed. And, um, we did have one at one time. Um, it helped out in the council clerk's office when Regina was still council clerk. When she had surgery, the, the pool secretary came in and, and ran the meetings and, and did the job for her. But I believe it was in 2011 when we were having to make cuts. Um, that position was cut and it hasn't been filled since.
Okay, um, is that members of council, uh, committee, uh, finance committee, are you wanting to remove that also?
Yes. Jeremy?
Okay. All right, let me see if I get these correct. So we are modifying this by removing the signing bonus under section I, removing section H completely, removing under section F, parks and play, uh, tennis program supervisor. And what else was to be removed? The casual secretary, that's correct. And removing the casual secretary. Yes, we can.
I've got a question. You know, because some of these things are confusing, not knowing what's filled and what's not filled. Is there a way that maybe, rather than going through and trying to remove things right now, that we could ask the administration to maybe color code that and tell us what's currently filled, what's not filled, and let them explain to us one by one as we run through the list of them, what ones they absolutely don't need and what ones they might want us to consider leaving in if they have a valid reason?
Well, that's what we're doing.
I thought that was what we were doing.
That's what I thought we were doing.
Me too.
We're going through and just picking at them right now without having time to read through them and know which ones are filled and not filled for those of us that don't know what ones, you know, we do, don't have filled.
Well, then I don't know what we're having this discussion for tonight at all then. I mean, let's just call it quits and forget it and go home.
Oh, we are home.
Joyce, can you, out of these that are currently on here, maybe this did help clarify Kevin? Which I understand, Kevin, I agree. Maybe the next time we can have this drawn up.
That, that's what I meant. For the next time we go through, this would be nice to have them labeled somehow to what's open, what's open.
Yeah, that, currently, Joyce, all these, except the ones we crossed out, are filled positions. Our, our positions that we have filled last year and are gonna try to fill this year, correct?
Um.
Is there any exceptions?
The only, the only exception that I can see is the police department no longer has an administrative secretary. The dispatchers are taking care of those duties. And that has been going on since Lisa Boars retired. That's in section E under safety forces.
That's correct.
Mark, I have a question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, do we have an administrator of assistant for the safety, safety service director?
Yes, that would be Kelly Patterson.
I thought she was.
Yeah, she's underneath the service director, that is the position.
Oh, it is, okay.
Okay, so as we see here, we are eliminating under section B, casual secretary, under section E, police administrative secretary, section F, tennis program supervisor, section H, we're eliminating that, casual pool secretary, under I, eliminate the wording, signing bonus and a hundred and eighty dollars. And we're modifying the wording on page four, the bottom two paragraphs of, for legal assistant, it'll say may be up to, and the other one is for victim's advocate and the word will be up to, which will be added to the sentence to the forty hours and eliminating the casual secretary in the writing. Is there anything else? If not, do I have a motion? Uh, oh, and I'm sorry, on page twelve, the, uh, there may be under section fifteen for the minute man, the word may is replacing the word shall. So with those modifications, as I stated, do I have a motion?
So move, Bruce Truka.
Do I have a second?
Second, Jim.
Okay, all right, uh, roll call, if there's no other discussions, I'll take a vote. Uh, Bruce Truka.
Yes.
Jimmy.
Yes.
Kevin Myers.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Under ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty, we are removing, uh, on page one, under section A, the utility service superintendent and the next line on page two, the utility superintendent. We're removing those two positions. Is there any other modification?
Yes, see, I'm sorry.
I thought they had removed the superintendent from filtration and wastewater also.
Yes.
Okay, so we're removing everything at, uh, from the util, uh, utility service superintendent and utility superintendent and then section B and section C is being removed also for filtration and wastewater. Okay.
It was basically just the service director.
So if there's no other.
Safety service contract.
Sorry?
Yeah.
All right, I was talking to myself.
So this is basically, no, it's okay, basically this is just the service safety contract for, for Jeff Wagner.
And there's still one position open for a city engineer part-time that was still left in there.
Do we have a city engineer part-time?
No.
No, we contract right now, we would like to someday have one, but because we pay so much in engineering fees.
So would it, I, I don't know, and I, I'm just asking, so wouldn't it be easier to just put, no offense Jeff, Jeff on with the other, um, employees? I'm sorry. But it just seems simpler.
Well, it does, and, and I totally, I totally agree, I didn't understand why they did this separate thing.
Yep. But I would put it on with the other one and then it would just be one.
Well, Mr. Ratliff, can you clarify that, over? This has to be separate if I'm not mistaken.
They were originally done separate because the, uh, the, the supervisor positions, uh, the benefits may have been different. They, they were all out the union employees and, and there may be some differences in them. But, you know, the few years that, that I've been here, uh, they've eliminated four or five positions and they've dumped it all onto, uh, Mr. Wagner, so, um, I think most of the other stuff is the same, I will note that with respect to the service safety director, there are specific requirements, um, in addition to taking on all the other roles. If you look at foot one, he's also not, uh, he doesn't qualify for overtime, he doesn't qualify for flex time, no, no. Um, so there's a lot more restrictions on his position than just the, uh, the normal safety force, normal other position.
Does that answer you?
Requires his own ordinance.
Sure question. The position does.
Yeah, his, yeah, I'm saying, because he doesn't, he has different requirements than the other people that were in the other ordinance.
Yeah, that, everybody's not in their head yet, I was trying to look through the, all the other sections and see where there are the other differences, there may be, I don't know. They're always treated differently.
Okay, does that help you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, with those modifications, are we going to leave the city engineer in there? Actually, I do agree with Joyce, I think it would be good to leave that, it doesn't mean we have to fill it and we haven't filled it yet because we have contracted the four years I've been on council and Bruce, you could answer longer, you're the one who's been here the longest on, I don't think they've had a contract with anybody since, uh, Lynn McKeever, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, it started right when I did and right now going through new engineering, um, qualifications right now, so we, we haven't had an engineer, we had an engineering tech that we've never filled. So if you want to leave that in there, you can, maybe someday we will hire a part-time engineer and maybe cut down on our costs from an engineering firm.
Okay, this is a good idea.
Okay. All right, so with removing everything except the service safety director and the position for city engineer part-time, do I have a motion for this? Kevin made a motion? Do I have a second? Oh, you did, I'm sorry Bruce, okay, Bruce made the motion, do I have a second? I have a second from either you, Jim, or Kevin.
Kevin's asleep.
Second. My computer was froze up again.
Okay, so you seconded Kevin?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead Vicki.
Um, I'm thinking we need to go back to the billet since you've made some other removals out of the employee and, um, oh, what's the other one? Well, you, you did some removals in thirteen and fourteen twenty twenty, which we do not have taken out of the billet and we're going to need to remove them there as well.
Okay, um.
If you'll take a look at what removals we.
Mr. Ratliff, would it be fine that we make a motion to adjust the billet to the modifications that we made on ordinance thirteen twenty twenty and fourteen twenty twenty, adjust the billet to, make a motion to adjust the billet to match those?
Hang on, he just stepped out for a second.
I think we better do is go down through it and find it. Why don't we just go down through it and be done with it?
All right, let's finish fourteen twenty twenty, then go back to the billet and re-modify that. So, uh, I had a first and second. All, uh, Bruce Truka.
Yes.
Kevin Myers.
Yes.
Jimmy.
Yes.
All right. Fourteen twenty twenty is passed, we will move back to the billet.
I have a question on it again. I just want to know the difference between an administrative assistant and an administrative secretary. Is there one?
Yes. There's definitely one. The administrative, the administrative assistant is basically assistant to the service director and the mayor. Uh, she handles basically everything they need, she's also human resources.
Callie.
The administrative secretary, um, handles planning commission, zoning board of appeals, any of those meetings he takes minutes for. Um, he also, um, issues receipts for permits when people come in to get building permits, zoning permits, that type of thing. He, he makes the deposits, he, you know, any, any other duties is assigned, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, he, his position, I, since I'm on the BZA and the BBSA, he is, uh, who communicates with all of us on those two boards and he does do the work that Landon, um, like Joyce mentioned, all the other work that Landon does.
Thank you.
So back to the billet, we need to remove go through here. Under page two, we got to remove the, we did, the utility su, service superintendent.
You want to start with page one.
Okay, page one.
Page one, casual secretary part-time, under law director.
We removed that, didn't we?
We already removed that Vicki.
Right, we're just reviewing here.
We're just redoing the ones we missed.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's okay, thank you, uh, uh, that's all right, don't want to miss anything. Um, okay, under page two, the utility service superintendent, the utility superintendent.
We already had that one.
Okay, marking those off. Um.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I've got Rob on the phone here, he's in his office revising that right now, did you want, did you have a question for him?
No.
Well, we were asking him if we could just make the motion to revise this again on the billet. We're taking up the wording.
Yeah, go ahead, Rob. He wants to know what the changes are.
We modified the ordinance, uh, of fourteen twenty twenty by removing utility superintendent, the filtration and wastewater superintendent, the, uh, and on page one, the utility service superintendent, we're, remove that wording from the ordinance and the wording that we moved, removed previously from ordinance thirteen twenty twenty. We need to take it out of the billet also, if I'm not mistaken, or correct?
Yeah, we were taking the casual secretary out, utility service superintendent out, utility superintendent out. Is there any other ones you want to take out?
Yes.
Filtration. And filtration. Filtration and wastewater, right?
Yes.
Wait, which, which?
Which section and which number?
Uh, section K and L.
Page four. The wastewater works department, um, it'd be the, uh,
Superintendent class three.
Yeah. It'd be under filtration, section C, under K, section C, filtration superintendent class three and L under section A, uh, superintendent class three, removing those two positions.
What about N?
Right, the casual secretary under N. And I do believe that covers what we removed.
No, no, it does not.
Go back to Lisa and Lisa said, uh, tennis program supervisor, letter, letter F.
Okay, thank you.
That's page three of five, letter F.
And also, um, on page three, under B, police, the administrative secretary.
Yep.
That's correct.
Have we talked to the union about that?
That's what I was, it would have been a union question.
I, I don't know, sir, is, is that something, we want to go ahead and take that administrative secretary out of the police?
Good thing about that one, doesn't that be a real C position?
Contract, isn't it, MOU?
I, I don't, I don't know if that's in the contract or not, okay, because similarly up in the, uh, fire department, you got enforcement officer, you've got administrative, you know, we've got other things, I don't, those involve another contract, not, not an ASPI or non-union contract, so I don't know that we want to delve into those police and fireworks right now.
Can we look into that, see if we have the availability to do that without causing any problems?
Let's, let's not do anything at this point in time.
Let's, let's just leave it in, I mean, they haven't filled it in a long time, I don't come up, but.
But I have a question, Vicki DeShawn, I have a question.
Hold on, okay, we, we got to keep us in control, so we need to leave that in, if I'm not mistaken, due to, we don't know if it's in the union contract.
I mean, we're, I'm just saying, not in the next two minutes, I'm sure you're doing all the other stuff, but, um, and I don't, we, we're trying to talk about the ASPI stuff and not the fire stuff, so I don't know that, we've talked to anybody about that.
May I ask a question, please? Vicki DeShawn?
Go ahead.
Because the, because the police administrative secretary is included under the ordinance, uh, thirteen dash twenty twenty, would that not tell you that it's not in the union?
Is it in there? I, I don't know.
Because under safety for, under safety forces, we have the fire chief, is not in the union, police chief's not in the union. Um, so I have to believe the police administrative secretary's not in the union. Um, so I have to believe the police administrative secretary's not in the union, that the utility person's not in the union, and the part-time dispatchers are not in the union, since they're listed on the employee manpower ordinance, I guess is what I want to say, not ASME.
It turns 2020 that they are not in the union, they are not, they are non-union positions.
So that answers our question with the removal of the secretary position, not of the police department.
Okay, then. Okay.
Any more questions for Rob here?
You want the code enforcement officer out of the fire department as well?
No, I would say no, because if we don't bring back Gordon, somebody's got to do it.
Yeah. Jeff brings up a good point there, Rob, if for some reason we do, we don't bring back Gordon, we're, somebody's got to be doing that, so we're going to need that position in there, sooner or later.
Uh, yes, that's, that's the same argument for the administrative secretary in the police, I, so I.
Anybody have a question from the finance committee on that, or?
Nope.
I thought that gentleman was like an inspector, not a secretary.
That's what I thought.
He was some kind of a inspector.
Yes, he's a property, he's a code of property management, is that it?
Code inspector, not a secretary.
He's not a secretary, he's a, he is a code enforcement officer.
Okay.
He's not a secretary at all.
Okay, so, I'll read off what we're removing.
Thanks, Rob.
I'll read off what we're removing. Section B, casual secretary. And then on page two, utility service superintendent, utility superintendent under E, safety forces, section B, administrative secretary, uh, section F, tennis program supervisor under section K, section C, subsection C, filtration superintendent class three, L, subsection A, superintendent class three, and N, casual secretary part-time, let alone the previous modification of the wording to laborers under section I, to skilled, 50% street, 50% parks. I need a motion from finance committee for these modified, final modifications to the billet.
So moved, Jim.
Jim, okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Bruce. All right, if there are no other questions, I'll roll call. Jimmy.
Yep.
Bruce Truca.
Yes.
Kevin Myers.
Yes.
Okay. All right. We made motions and all three ordinances passed, 122020, 132020, and 142020 passed. Since this is a special meeting, I will call the meeting to the end at 7:44 PM. All right, meeting over.
Okay. Uh, we are going to call the special meeting, April 14th, it was supposed to be at 7:00 PM, but it's now 7:35. Uh, special council meeting to order, and we need to roll call. Keever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
B.
Yeah.
Truca.
Here.
Yocum.
Here.
Vote.
Here.
All set.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, we have communications and petitions, we have several letters, um, we're going to start out with the number one, which is Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 68 letter.
This is addressed to, um, it's from, as the council president said, it's from Bucyrus, FOP Lodge 68, 500 South Sandusky Street in Bucyrus, dated April 10th, is addressed to city council. Uh, Bucyrus City Council, greetings from the dedicated members of the Bucyrus Fraternal Order of Police, Inc., Lodge number 68. We are writing to express our vehement opposition to the unnecessary amendment for emergency part-time police officers. At the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, cities, cities across this great nation found they were ill-prepared and forced to adapt to fluid changes. As for Bucyrus, the bulk of our citizens complied with daunting restrictions while cooperating with new standards of social distancing. Much to the credit of our countywide citizen and government partnership, Crawford County has only 13 positive cases and one hospitalization as of the date of this letter. Our membership has also been forced to adapt to fluid policy changes and court procedures, patrol, and equipment mandates. Through it all, we have maintained uninterrupted dedication and service to our community with only minor inconveniences to the public. Despite the unknowns surrounding the initial COVID-19 outbreak and large numbers of public contacts, our people have risen to the occasion to meet all our community's needs with only two possible exposures, one of which was not work-related. FOP number 68 acknowledges our city, state, and nation are experiencing unprecedented times. We also acknowledge there is still an unknown possibility of a second outbreak, but we hold firm that future preparations must be based in common sense rather than knee-jerk responses or doomsday scenarios. With the mutual aid agreements already in place, there is no bona fide evidence to support, FOP number 68 members would be unable to respond to a future outbreak in the same fashion as the first. Matter of fact, we would be experienced and far better prepared for future responses, unlike inexperienced part-time personnel who would need trained on the fly. For these reasons, FOP Lodge number 68 vehemently opposes part-time overstaffing and believes it would be entirely unnecessary for the Bucyrus community. Sincerely, R. Thomas Walker, President, Bucyrus FOP, Inc., number 68.
And then we got another letter there from, uh, retired firefighter.
Uh, we have a letter from Mike Hassinger, 2201 Nosaro, Bucyrus, this is dated April 13th, uh, it was addressed to the council president via email. Dear Bucyrus City Council, I am writing to ask that you vote no Tuesday on the legislation to add part-time police and firefighters. I had 29 years' experience on the fire department and can tell you that there is a huge difference in the training of a full-time firefighter and someone that would be hired as a part-time firefighter. We both know this is nothing more than a power play by the mayor to eventually take the fire department to part-time department. The tax payers of Bucyrus voted six and a half years ago for a strong police and fire department when they passed a half percent safety forces tax. Unfortunately, this mayor has continued to not use this money to increase the staffing at the fire department. Not $1 of this money has been used to increase the staffing by one hour. In fact, the fire department has had its, has had its staffing reduced by three members since the passage of this tax. How do we bring in $1.7 million last year alone with the safety forces income tax, but reduce the fire department's staffing? If we are not going to use the safety forces tax for the purpose, it was approved, or is it time to repeal it? On the issue of the labor attorney telling the city that they can add part-time firefighters, I would like to remind council that this is the same attorney that told the city they could fire an employee at the fire department. I was involved with helping the, the union during this difficult time and assured them that he would receive his job back. As I predicted, he was awarded his job back with all benefits. This cost the city in excess of $100,000 by the time they paid the attorney arbitrator overtime to cover his shift and the employee. If this attorney is so sure of his advice, maybe he would be willing to only accept payment if the city wins this argument in arbitration, which is where I am sure the issue would end up. There is current contract language in reference to part-time employees in the fire department. I know because I helped negotiate this language to protect our employees from a overzealous mayor as we have now. There is also some past practice that would come into play in arbitration. The last issue I would like to address is the manpower needed for EMS as stated by Councilman Myers. The city has known for the past several years that this was a possibility, but has done nothing to address the manpower needs. Why have we not been hiring instead of eliminating positions in preparation for this day? The administration refuses to bring the union leadership to the table to discuss this, to discuss this, because they do not like the union or its leadership. I am told that when they have had labor management meetings in the past, the mayor has been at times belligerent and arrogant with the union. What a great way to institute unity within the city. This mayor is a my-way-or-the-highway type of leader, and my hopes are that this council will stand up to him and start to right some of the wrongs that he has done to the fire department. In closing again, I thank you for your time and I ask again that you vote no on Tuesday. Thanks, Mike Hassinger, 2201 Nosaro, Bucyrus.
Okay, and we did receive two letter, two additional letters, um, one from Mr. Wireball, one from IAFF Union. They did not make it in for the deadline of the uh, noon the day prior. However, I, I would be willing to entertain a motion for council to, per the ordinance of this city can waive their rules by a five to seven vote at any time, and if anybody would like to entertain a motion to that, we could then read those other letters.
I'd like to entertain a motion to do that.
Second.
I'll call vote, Mr. Please. Okay, um, Yocum.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
Keever.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Me. Truca.
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read the additional two letters. Uh, this one is dated today, uh, from Dan Wireball, City Bucyrus, Bucyrus City Council. Just wanted to give some input on this special meeting being held, I would like this letter at the meeting since there is no public participation. Um, we all, we all know how some of these emergencies arise, City Hall, cycling on Sandusky, swimming pool contractors, Pines Reservoir. A lot of times we find out later that the only emergency has been the lack of transparency and keeping council members involved in the process that they were elected to do. At this point, council may not have enough information to make an informed decision, but you will be interested in just that. Please consider this, according to reporting from the Telegraph Forum, the administration is asking to add 100 part-time positions in the police and fire departments. Positions would be filled without civil service exam, this would not be union considering part-time employees in the fire department, that it has at least three years since the city has known that they will need to have a plan to take over EMS for Bucyrus, and how exactly would these part-time employees be paid for? May I also suggest making this as temporary, as a temporary measure, reevaluating after six months, getting the fire and police unions to fully agree in writing before proceeding, and possibly getting constituents' input on this measure. There is a lot to consider in rewriting the billet, including the safety of our citizens and the job security of the men and women that have served in our safety forces, some for decades. Good luck, Dan Wireball, and I'll go ahead to the next letter. This is dated April 14th, it is from Gregory C. Hershey, President Local 1120 of the Fire, uh, Fire Department Union, Bucyrus City Council, I am writing you this letter on behalf of the Bucyrus Fire Local 1120. We are considered about the proposal, we are concerned about the proposal to introduce part-time employees in the safety forces and would like to answer the questions you asked, but did not get the answers. Number one, no, the union was never consulted in this matter. As I understand from the meeting on nine April 2020, the administration wanted to introduce a pool of up to 80 part-time employees on the billet for the fire department, with 40 of those positions not needing training in firefighting. This would provide the administration the flexibility during the pandemic and in the future. We, the union, have been in constant discussion with this administration about the manpower shortages in the fire department. We have asked multiple times that the city maintain a hiring list, uh, though civil service, through civil service, so that if we have a member leave our department, retire, quit, injury, or death, we can fill the position as soon as possible, reducing the shortage in coverage for the city. We feel that this would be the better option than hiring a large pool of part-time employees and not providing the benefits of full-time employment. The employees of the city are an asset to the quality of life of the citizens, not a tool that can be discarded when no longer needed. We see no value in this plan and urge you to repeal this matter. Feel free to contact me with any concerns in this matter or future questions. Thank you for your time and service, Gregory C. Hershey, President Local 1120. And I will, you'll need a motion to accept and file all four of these communications.
I have a quick question. Um.
Go ahead.
I, uh, if I could, uh, as I completely agree, those letters did need to be read, um, they were pertinent to the situation at hand here. I was just kind of curious as to why we made a special motion and had a vote to read those two letters tonight, being that they were received late, just a couple of weeks ago or a week ago, at an issue with a letter not being read during the council meeting, and it was received before the meeting and asked to be read at that meeting. So I guess I'm just kind of words of distinguishing of what's important enough to be read and maybe not enough to be read.
I, I wanted at this meeting to make sure everything was done exactly per the rules of this council. That is why I asked for the vote to read them other two letters, because there's a rule in there that says, um, they have to be received like noon the day before.
Right, I understand that, and I, and I get that, and I think that approving reading them was a very great idea. I just, like I said, you know, how come we made the exception to make a vote tonight to approve the read those when they were received late, as they weren't gotten time, but yet we didn't read a letter that was received in time and asked to be read? That's what I was getting.
I, I'd like to discuss this at a future council meeting, Doug, if, if we could, um, kind of table this discussion.
That's fine.
But I, I do have some, I do have some answers for your questions there.
Sounds good.
Okay, so back to the motion of accepting the four letters, is anybody going to make a motion?
So moved, all set.
Second vote.
We'll do a roll call vote, um, all set.
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
Keever.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
B. B.
Yes, sorry, I was muted.
Thank you. Truca.
Yes.
And Yocum.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have time for visitors to speak, is there any visitors that would like to speak at this public hearing tonight, or at the meeting's public hearing session tonight? Okay, it appears we have no visitors that want to speak. Uh, moving on to the finance committee report, Mr. Keever.
Yes, finance met this evening, Tuesday, April 14th, 2020, for a special finance committee meeting. Started at 6:30 PM. Members present, Kevin Myers, Bruce Truca, James Me and myself, Chair. Meeting was called to order by myself at 6:30. We discussed the billet, which is, which is the ordinance 122020. Uh, it was first motioned by Bruce, seconded by Kevin to make the initial changes. We proceeded on with the employee manpower, which is ordinance number 132020. With the adjusted adjustments made, Bruce made a motion, and James Me made a second motion passed. On the third one, which was the supervisor manpower, ordinance 142020. Uh, we made the adjustments after a lengthy discussion, Bruce made a motion, and Kevin seconded. During that time, uh, Vicki DeShawn brought it to our attention that we needed to make adjustments into the billet since we modified both of these and made some additional changes. We went back to the billet and made the modifications to match the manpower that was, to remove manpower that was removed from both of the billet, uh, both of the ordinances. And the modified billet, the second modification, was made for acceptance as James Me made the motion, Bruce Truca seconded. And the motion passed, all three motions passed with the modifications. And I adjourned the finance committee meeting at 7:44 PM.
Need a motion to accept the committee report?
So moved.
Second, me.
Thank you, uh, Myers.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Truca.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
And Keever.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, and then visitors input regarding the report of the special committee. Is there any visitors input? Okay, no visitors input. Consideration.
Kurt, I'm sorry. I have one quick question on Section 15 of the billlet. The Minutemen, Minutemen appointed by the fire chief, um, that's only like staffed emergency for like one fire here or there. That's not something that they're gonna be able to pull up 15 positions part-time on, is it?
No, those, those, those are not part-time positions. That's kind of a paid-on-call situation, and they haven't had those for over 15 years. Um, I think that's.
That's not gonna be something that administration or somebody that they have to be appointed by the fire chief, I see. So it's not gonna be something the administration could do that. It's something the fire department has to do if they want that.
I talked to, I, I talked to one of the union guys and their stance on that was they, they didn't think any of those, um, uh, Minutemen should be added until they, they got their regular billlet all the way full.
I have a question. Um, are we gonna be asked to vote on this before it's written correctly?
Yeah.
Well, that appears to be what's happening in this meeting.
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't understand. There was two or three people talking.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Bruce.
No, I'm just saying, that's, that's one of the problems we do face, that we never exactly see the changes that we've requested. Now, we're only assuming that they're going to write it as we ask them to.
I'm not comfortable voting on things that aren't in black and white and correct.
What?
I'm not.
I'm not, I'm not in the opposition to what you're saying, Lisa, and I would, I would be open to somebody entertaining an idea of, um, scheduling another meeting in two, two days and coming back and voting on this once it's all on paper. I, I wouldn't be opposed to that at all, if somebody wants to make a motion for that.
Mr. President, um, I do have, uh, completed, uh, versions of these three ordinances uh, on my desktop. Uh, they will need to be formatted and, uh, and so forth. Um, I can send them by email to everybody right now if they wanna look at the changes. If they want, uh, a final version of them, um, that's probably gonna take an hour. Um, I do have the final versions on my desk. Where, where you go from there is up to you.
I'm, I'm leaving it up to the council members what they wanna do here. If, if, if anybody has any suggestions, I'm open to hearing them right now.
I just think it would be a good practice for us to only vote on things that are done correctly.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm just saying. I'm not comfortable voting on something that I've scribbled notes all over. And then when I see the real thing, then I'm okay with voting on it.
I, I, I totally understand that, Lisa, and I, I'm, I'm 100% in agreement with you here. I'd, I'd like to see all this in black and white in front of me in final format as well, and I would be open to the idea of scheduling a special meeting either tomorrow or the day after or something, and we can get all this stuff in order.
I'm fine with that. Any, anything that.
Uh, Council President, I'm fine with that also. I'd also like to have a couple days to get in touch with people that this contract's gonna affect that are maybe watching the meeting or listening but not able to or that don't have technology, like, so we could look into it. I'm, I'd really like to talk to, um, the fire chief and the fire department about the Minutemen issue with their billlet not being full because that just, I don't, I don't like the wording of that, and that worries me that it could be taken out of context.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree. There was a lot of information discussed in that committee meeting, and things got changed and scribbled and all that, and uh, for the sake of making sure everything is done 100% right here, I'm, I'm totally in favor if somebody wants to make a motion here of, um.
I'd like to make. I'm sorry.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yeah, Vicki, go ahead.
Um, is there anything in these three ordinances that constitute the need to even have a special council meeting? Could they not wait and be addressed at the next council meeting, regular council meeting on the 14th?
I think a lot of this stuff can retroactively be applied. So if we hold a lot, let's just hold this stuff to first reading tonight. How's everybody think about that? If you said so, Joyce, it's not coming through your microphone.
Joyce is muted.
Joyce states on mute or computer.
You're causing issues with the payroll issue. I mean, we have payroll this, this week. We'd like to have this done so that it can roll into the next payroll. And the retroactive part of it has to be figured out before we can do that. That doesn't happen just, you know, with a snap of the fingers. So I'd like, you know, I'd like to see.
Has it ever been done before, though?
Yeah, retroactive things have been done before. Well, when I, it's true, but it's, it's a lot of work for payroll.
I'm asking for a day or two. I just don't want to vote on something that is a mess of notes.
Right, I totally understand that. I mean, if, if that would be fine. That gives the department time to, to get things in place before the next payroll.
So Lisa made a motion.
I, I'd like to move that we either have another meeting to, um.
I, I
go to the first.
I think the prob- I think the proper thing here would be just, you know, have this stuff basically read as a first reading right now, and then at the end of the meeting here under new business, we can discuss if, if we're gonna have another special meeting in a day or two.
How can we have a first reading when we all know what we're voting on?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, then if we, let's not hold it as a first reading then, and let's just have a, a motion to have another meeting in a couple days or something.
Or do it within 24 hours.
Well, how long do we gotta advertise a, a meeting in, in advance?
24 hours.
That'd put us at 8 o'clock tomorrow night if we decided right now to have it.
Can we just?
I think you're looking at Thursday.
Why, is some people going to bed at 8 o'clock?
Some of us do.
I actually have to work tomorrow evening from home. I, I'll be working till about 9 o'clock on my computer.
But I, I do believe we have to give the news media 24 hours. It has to be publicly for 24 hours notice. No, we can't have it tomorrow. We have to have it Thursday so that it gets into the newspaper and other forms of placement. If I'm not mistaken, am I correct, Mr. Hill?
Um, I'm not expressing my opinion here, but I would say you have two options. Do it Thursday evening at a time of your choosing. That gives you time to, uh, all the members to look at the legislation carefully, speak to anyone in the community you think you need to speak to, and also get the media a chance to do what they wish to do with the announcement, uh, which is up to them. But if they wanna put it in the paper or on the website and have it be seen by their readership, it would, uh, the more time the better. Um, then Friday, Monday, if you're talking until Monday, you might as well wait until Tuesday. Um, so really, we can have a special meeting on Tuesday, or we can, uh, put this into the agenda for, uh, for next Tuesday. I'm sorry, a special meeting on Thursday this week, or put it on the agenda for next Tuesday, which we already have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 other pieces of legislation. So we can make it 11 and that might actually record. I'm not, no, it's short of a record. I think our record is 12. But, um, no, it's, it's up to you. If you wanna have a special meeting on Thursday, that's easily done. As I said, I have the legislation on my desktop, and I can have it all to you by, before noon tomorrow. Um, so it's really up to your schedules, um, whether you wanna do it, say, Thursday evening at a time, uh, that you wanna pick, or, um, or during the regular meeting on Tuesday. Um, just let me know, let me know what time, and, and we'll go from there.
Well, I move that we do it Thursday night then.
Thursday at 7 or 6.
All second.
That's, at 7. How's that sound? Is that too late?
Okay, we got, we got a motion, uh, Bruce has made to have a meeting next around Thursday. Lisa's all seconded, so.
Thank you.
Good question. Is that the 16th?
Yeah.
It is.
What time was it?
7.
7.
No, I thought you were gonna have it this Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is the 16th, Vicki.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, Doug, it's late for me. I'm sorry.
Is there any discussion, or are we gonna have Todd do a roll call vote on that?
Roll call.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
Keever.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vote.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, 6 to 1 vote, it, it passes. So we can skip over all this stuff on here. Don't need to excuse anybody. Funny motion adjourned.
So moved. Keever.
All set.
Who was the first?
Keever.
Thank you. Uh, do a roll call vote. Keever.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Truca.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm on call. The meeting adjourned at 8:12 PM, and we'll get a notice out to the media for the special meeting.